This this evening and welcome to August. It's hard to believe so many things have moved by quickly this summer and we are moving right along. Before we get into the meeting and the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to amend the agenda with two additional recognitions for Josh Green and Norman Linnenberg that we'll talk about under our recognition section. So I'd like to make a motion to do that. Do we have a second?
I'm moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with that, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated and join us, if you would, in a moment of silent reflection. Just a couple of notes that has impacted the Radford community here over the last few weeks. Obviously, we lost several significant individuals. Coach Norman Linnenberg passed away, as did Mr. Josh Green, both long-term employees of the Radford City Public School System, but much bigger in the community than that. And also, I'd like you to keep in mind those folks, their families, and the family of Candy Whims Adams as well, another significant figure in the Radford community. Thank you all very much. Council members, you all have minutes from our July meeting. Are there any amendments or do we have a motion to approve as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Quick update before we get on to citizen comments for the public matters. Since we've last met, Mr. Meredith, Todd Meredith, has joined us full-time as our city manager. Now, our hiring process went relatively quickly and as such, he already had some commitments set up for the summer. He was willing to start with us on July the 21st and has been hard at work. Came in much, a little bit before that, so he was able to get acclimated and learn a little bit about us. He's joining us this evening remotely, so he is on the Zoom meeting and can still participate. Todd, are you with us this evening?
Yes, sir.
We are glad you are here and thank you so much. Lots of good work is already taking place and we appreciate you being a part of things. And I will move forward now with citizen comments on public matters. This is the time where you can come forward and share your thoughts, concerns, questions with us for the public record. Please come down to the podium up front, use the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. At this time, the floor is open for citizen comments on public matters.
Hello, I'm Ryan Webb. I am here on behalf of a group of guys that would like for you all to take a matter or issue to the Recreation Council about opening the Rec Center back up in the mornings. Those hours allow for families and people with families or obligations in the afternoon to go work out. I have a petition with about 60-plus names on it. In the mornings, we didn't only have a basketball group of 20-plus guys, we had racquetball, we had pickleball groups, weightlifting groups. We'd like for you all to just take that petition to that commission and try to reopen that. And we're not asking for every day, just a couple of days a week, so we can get out there and have some competitive fellowship with our peers.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have any citizen comments for the public?
Do you have that petition you're wanting to leave with us?
You'll leave that with Melissa, please? Any other citizen comments for the public record? Seeing none at this point, we will close that section of the meeting. And at this point in time, we do have several special...
I did want to respond to the public comment since he did bring it up. Thanks for bringing that to us, Ryan. Actually, I serve on the Rec Commission, so I'd be happy to take that to them. We meet again this month, so I will get that petition. I've had several people reach out to me as well, sharing that concern, so I will pass it along and ask that we revisit that. And then I'd be happy to send you the date for that Rec Commission meeting and any follow-up correspondence, I'll make sure that I follow up with you. All right, thank you.
I've had several people reach out as well, especially the teachers that have a lot of stuff to do in the afternoon.
Right.
I believe the last I had heard that we did send this topic back to the Rec Center to reconsider and to... I know they had evaluated the hours based on numbers of attendance, but maybe to go back and relook at that. So they might... Are they in the process of that?
Yeah, well, it hasn't been officially on an agenda item yet. There was a couple of meetings, we didn't have enough for a quorum, but I know that we do plan to meet this month, and so I will make sure that we get that added and pass that along to you.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate that. One of the things I was starting to say a little bit, we like to do recognitions of folks for their outstanding work, their time with the city and the things that they've done in our community. And we have the opportunity today for a very special recognition for someone who has been a part of this city for decades, but definitely the last 15 years of employment to the city of Radford. Jenny Webb, who has been our Clerk of Counsel as well as the Communication Director for the city, has left us now for a job at Virginia Tech, greener pastures in some ways and exciting new opportunities. And we do have a proclamation recognizing her accomplishments throughout her tenure here. Seth, if you'll read that.
I'll just reiterate and tie into that. Jenny, thank you for everything you've done for Rafford. I know we're all very appreciative of that and the whole city is. You've done a good job and you will be missed, but I always like to remind you, you know your way back home, so keep us in mind. But we're excited for your opportunity and we will miss you and thank you for all you've done for Rafford. So with that being said, City of Rafford proclamation honoring Jenny Webb. Whereas, the Rafford City Council honors the service and contributions of Jenny Webb to the city of Rafford. And whereas, Jenny has served the city of Rafford for 15 years in various work capacities. And whereas, in 2010, Jenny began as a part-time assistant registrar, then part-time in the finance office as an accounting clerk and part-time office assistant for the city manager. In 2013, Jenny came on full-time as the public information coordinator and added the appointment to Clerk of Counsel to her resume in 2016. In 2021, she was promoted to Director of Communications while continuing her appointment to Clerk of Counsel. And whereas, in her tenure, Jenny received numerous certifications for emergency preparedness, response and recovery, managing critical incidents, sport and special event public information, and emergency notification, just to name a few. And whereas, Jenny's contributions to the city also include service to the Library Commission, member of the City-University Joint Commission, the Highlander Festival Committee, the Holiday Parade Committee, Rafford Community Fest Committee, July 4th Committee. And whereas, Jenny Webb has served Rafford with dedication, expert knowledge, and love for the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Rafford does hereby honor and thank Jenny Webb for her years of leadership and dedicated service to our community. Counsel, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this proclamation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Come on down, bring your family down.
Let's get the whole crew right here together.
Y'all just do them.
I'll come in here.
All right, go on, go on.
I think you deserve a standing ovation.
We're not saying goodbye, we'll say see you later. It is always wonderful to get to recognize outstanding accomplishments. And Jenny, we're proud of you. Congratulations. Thank you, and we'll see you soon. We also have some significant recognitions for the Radford City Police Department. Abigail Gravely recently received the Gold Line Telecommunication Continuing Education Scholarship and Training. And Captain Mansdorfer has helped secure over half a million dollars in grant funding. So I'm going to ask our chief to come down and let's recognize these folks.
Well, thank you guys for giving me a few minutes of your time tonight. I know that in the public safety business, you're nothing without your people. And I tell you guys and I tell everybody, we got the best men and women in the business. And tonight, we got two fine examples here. We have Abigail Gravely, who not only had an opportunity to attend elite training in her industry, but she got a scholarship to receive this training and a stipend to go. And if you know Abigail, you know that she's a second-generation communication officer, so you expect nothing less from her. But much like with Jenny, it's bittersweet, you know. Abigail, we found out just a few days ago that she's taking a job somewhere else. And Mr., you know, the Vice Mayor said it best, you know, Rafford's home, Abigail, you always have a place here, you're always welcome back. So thank you for everything that you've done for us. And then Michael Mansdorfer wears many hats at our PD. He's a captain, he's in charge of our communication center, evidence, technology, and we threw grant right in his way and he's excelled. We're over a half a million dollars last council meeting and then we have another $150,000 tonight that's at direct because of Michael and his work. And I told you guys it was unfair the last time, I got to come here in front of you and take all the praise and acknowledgement, but the truth is, we would not be getting this money without Manny and what he does. And the one thing that I want to share with these grants, they're not grants that we're chasing because they look good, it's stuff that we need and actually have to have, and they're no-match grants. So we're pretty close to a million dollars and we've got some stuff in the works that we hope and pray that will go through to help mitigate some of the salary issues with our school resource officers. So these two guys are fine examples and definitely deserve acknowledgement for what they've done for our city and for our PD. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you all. You deserve a round of applause as well. We are so thankful that you all have taken the initiative to make the lives of our citizens better, and that's really what so much of this is all about. At the top of the meeting, I mentioned two folks who spent their entire professional careers working to make people's lives better. Josh Green and Norman Linnenberg. And over the last two Saturdays, we've said farewell to them here in the city of Radford with memorial services. But we thought it would be appropriate for our council to recognize each of them. I did want to mention one positive, and just as we have done this evening with Jenny and Angie and Michael, recognizing people while they're still here is really important. And I think we need to do as much of that as we possibly can. But recognizing folks and how much they mean to us is always good. And we have a couple of resolutions to take a look at tonight. And Jesse, if you'll start with one for Mr. Green.
City of Radford Resolution, Mr. Green Day. Whereas, Mr. Josh Green faithfully served as an employee of MacGarg Elementary School for 37 years. And whereas, Mr. Green made a lasting investment in the children, families, teachers, and staff of Radford through his unwavering dedication and consistently positive outlook. And whereas, Mr. Green was deeply beloved by the Radford community and generations of citizens who were positively influenced by his presence, kindness, and service. And whereas, the citizens of Radford, both past and present, mourned his passing on July 29th, 2025. And whereas, Mr. Green's legacy continues to live on in the hearts and minds of the Bobcat Nation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Radford, Virginia, that the first day of school, August 13th, 2025, shall be known as Mr. Green Day in the city of Radford in honor and remembrance of Mr. Josh Green for his decades of dedicated service to Radford City Public Schools, his unwavering support and love for Radford students, and his lifelong commitment to the people of Radford. Adopted this 11th day of August, 2025 by the Radford City Council, I would like to make a motion that we accept this resolution and honor Mr. Green.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
And you know, I think it's fitting that we're able to do this for the first day of school, because if Mr. Green were at MacGarg Elementary on the first day of school, he'd probably be the first face that almost every kid met, and he would remember just about everything about each and every one of them. And so they will go to school on Mr. Green's Way, which is the street we have designated as you go into MacGarg, and hopefully they will all serve throughout the year in Mr. Green's Way. And we're excited for everybody. Thank you for presenting that. Another significant individual who passed that was important to so many in the Radford community around the Commonwealth and around the nation was Coach Norman Linnenberg. And we do have a resolution for Coach Norman Linnenberg Day. Whereas, Coach Norman Linnenberg was an exceptional educator, administrator, coach, and friend who served the Radford community for generations. And whereas, Coach Linnenberg became head football and track coach at Radford High School in 1970 and faithfully led the Bobcats for 38 years from 1970 to 2007. And whereas, he became one of the winningest coaches in Virginia High School League history and was inducted into the V H S L Hall of Fame in 1997. And whereas, under his leadership, the Bobcats secured two state championships in football and four in track, showcasing his commitment to excellence and teamwork. And whereas, Coach Linnenberg was a mentor who built character and positively impacted the lives of countless players, families, teachers, staff, and community members during his many decades of dedicated service to Radford City Public Schools. And whereas, he deeply loved the Bobcats and embodied the Radford spirit during both during his and after his tenure. And whereas, Coach Linnenberg was widely respected and beloved by the Radford community and by generations of citizens who were inspired and influenced by his life and work. And whereas, the citizens of Radford, past and present, were deeply saddened by his passing on July 17th, 2025. And whereas, Coach Linnenberg's legacy continues to live on in the hearts and minds of the Bobcat Nation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council, the city of Radford, Virginia, that the first home football Friday for the Bobcats, August 29th, 2025, shall be known as Coach Norman Linnenberg Day in the city of Radford in honor and remembrance of his extraordinary service, his lasting impact on generations of students and athletes, and his unwavering dedication to the Radford City Public Schools and the entire Radford community. Adopted this 11th day of August, 2025 by the Radford City Council. Counsel, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations to both Mr. Green and Coach Linnenberg, and congratulations to Radford for having had the influence of these fantastic individuals for so many years. Help us spread the word on this, because it is... Timing was a little bit tough getting this out in time for everybody to be aware of, specifically for Mr. Green Day on Wednesday, but we felt like it was important to move forward quickly rather than to let that time pass us by. Okay, we have exciting new things coming up. August the 23rd, Radford will enjoy the Second Annual Radford Community Fest. And here with an update is Tricia Smith and Melissa Skelton, our co-chairs of the Radford Community Fest Committee.
I'm glad I made a hard copy, so I apologize regarding the technology and the PowerPoint, but surely that's a little hard to follow, those recognitions that you just made. But one thing I could probably say about all of them is they truly loved our community. And what better way we continue to strive bringing our community together by holding this festival? So we're truly excited to be able to bring our second annual festival. Boy, it's less than two weeks away. Who... Here we go.
Here we go.
That's pretty much all, but all I have to say regarding that, right? Mayor, thank you. Tonight, we have Tricia Smith from Rafford University. It's been truly such a pleasure working alongside of her and every member of this team, and it truly does take a team for us to be able to put this little one-day festival on. So I'm truly grateful. Kelly, grateful for your representation on the City Joint Commission in supporting this event, because it truly is one of those earmarks that we've been trying to do between both the university and city in creating this event for everyone in our community. Yeah. Again, Mayor, as you shared, August 23rd, 11:00 a.m., please join us. We're excited, we have 104 vendors. Kids Zone is once again sponsored by Rafford University Fraternity Sorority Life. We've got five maybe plus, we've got lots of food options. Main stage with four acts, we've got street performers.
For our main stage, we're really excited, we've kind of changed up the layout a little bit, which we'll show you in just a moment, but we have a diverse range of music options for people to enjoy throughout the day. Sky Dolphin, Fat Laces, Domino Band, and ending with Crawford and Power. Very excited to bring those folks. And Fluidity, for those who were there last year, you'll remember the ooh and the ah factor that the Fluidity Performance Troop brings. So they've got some new stuff up their sleeves for us this year, and we're excited to have them join us. They will be doing a class in the Kids Zone as well to teach the kids how to do silks and hula hoops and some other fun tricks.
And we will surely get that time nailed down for everyone and promote that, that way they know, of course, we want them there the whole time, but what time they need to be there to enjoy that. As Tricia shared, we did change the layout a little bit. Last year, as you recall, the stage was literally on East Main, right at Virginia Street. This year, we have actually placed it within the parking area. You can see that red square in the old Hardee's parking lot area. The stage is going to be there, and we felt this would be an option, be able to spread the whole district out and be able to incorporate, you know, all the brick and mortars along that district. You really want to try to emphasize that those businesses are there year-round as well as all the vendors. And as we shared earlier, there are 107, and I guess there's still... We still have a little bit more space, not much, but there might be an option for you to still participate if you'd like. But we're really excited about everyone's participation, excuse me, participation. This year, in the middle of that street, we've got some, the vendors for the alcohol in the old, not the old, I'm sorry, in the parking area in front of the Norfolk Southern is where the Kids Zone is going to be. So we've moved that slightly. And of course, the food trucks will be where they were last year. New this year, we had one welcome tent on the Tyler Ave side. This year, we've incorporated two. So whether you're coming down Third Avenue to come into the district or by Tyler, we're going to have welcome booths and information, so you'll be able to know where everyone is along that corridor. So any questions the day of, we'll have maps, we'll have people answering your questions all day long. Miss anything? Parking options, there's lots of parking options, as well as utilizing Rafford Transit. We understand we are closing that street down, but we have Third Avenue parking lot, we've got campuses, opened a number of spaces. All of these can be found on our Community Fest, Rafford Community Fest website, so anything that we share tonight can always relay back to the website.
We're really excited about getting the word out. And last year, I think we did a really good job. This year, we're doing a great job. So you'll see flyers all over, and anybody, if you're sitting out there and you're like, "I didn't get one," I have them, I'll give them to you tonight. You can take as many as you need or I'll drop them off to your location. Social media has been a buzz. We're starting vendor shout-outs this week, so hopefully you're going to see a lot of traffic there. Please definitely check out the website. Everything is live on the website, all of our updates. Just to give you an idea of how it's going, we're really excited, kind of watching the search engine optimization metrics, and we're getting a lot of good traffic. The statistic here that I'm most excited about is actually the average session duration being six minutes. That means people are actually sticking around and looking, they're actually reading and taking a look at the information we've got up there, which is really exciting. One of the partnerships for advertising that's a little bit different this year, we're really excited about, is our partnership with the Blue Ridge Games. So we are part of their scavenger hunt, and we actually have television and print ads running during the games, telling people, "If you loved this, just don't stop here, come on down to Radford." The events are in Roanoke, come on down to Radford the next weekend and check out the Radford Community Fest." So a little bit of creativity in this year's advertising.
Want to know how you can help? Just scan me. There are a few... We've actually been very lucky, we've had a great amount of success in people volunteering, but we do still have some slots available, so please, you have a couple hours, we'd be more than happy to fill you in. So if you have any questions, please feel free.
Outstanding job, and thank you all, and thanks to all the committee members. I know it's been a lot of hard work. You know, one of the things we had hoped to do years ago when we were looking at downtown and particularly the area where you've put the main stage, is to try to create a center of gravity to pull people into downtown. This is a great way to do that, for folks to get to see what businesses are there, what opportunities are there, and to get to spend time together. So we thank you very much. On transit, they'll be able to catch transit at regular places around the city and it will drop off at the hub. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, Counsel?
Just thank you for all your hard work and Kelly for being our representative. I know a lot goes into this and the collaboration, so I'm looking forward to it. I know it was a good time last year, and it looks like it'd be bigger and better this year, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm very excited. I get to see firsthand how hard you guys work, not firsthand, but you know, at different meetings also, and I know everything that you guys put into it. The layout looks really, really great, it looks like it's going to flow really easily. You guys have done an amazing job with advertising and getting the word out, even better than last year, and it was very well attended last year, so I'm all smiles, I cannot wait. I'm excited.
And of course, as a reminder, it really does take a team. There are a whole lot of people behind the scenes, as you saw listed, who are helping, so are students, and I need to... Oh, I'm so sorry. Alexis Taylor, who is in the audience, she actually helped with this PowerPoint, so she has a special recognition this evening.
Thank you, Alexis. Great job. It looks great. Can we put this all out there on the website or on social media? Get it all out there?
Yep.
Fantastic. All right, help us spread the word. August 23rd, Radford's the place to be. Thank you all very much. Moving forward, we do have... We don't have any old business tonight, but we do have some new business with Jenny Webb leaving, as you heard us thank her and congratulate her on her new role. We need to appoint someone to fill the city clerk position, at least on an interim basis. And I say interim just because Mr. Meredith just joined us in July, he needs some time to really determine correct assignments and roles and everything along that line. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Melissa Skelton as our interim city clerk of council. Counsel, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
No discussion, but a thank you to Melissa. Melissa's picked up a lot, a lot of tasks, and we couldn't do it without you, so thank you for all that you do, and I know that this is one more thing on your plate, but I know that every single one of us appreciates what you do, so thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Melissa, thank you so much. And as Seth said, we really appreciate all the things that you do to help us move along every day, and we thank you very much for taking on this role as well. Our second appointment we need to make is regarding the New River Valley Passenger Rail Station Authority. Back in 2022, when the authority was formed, our previous city manager and I were appointed as the representatives, and at the time, Mr. Ridpath was serving a four-year term, and I was serving a two-year. And at the time, Mr. Ridpath was serving a four-year term, and I was serving a two-year term. Then my term got reworked in 2024 as a four-year term. So we just need to do two things. We need to appoint someone to Mr. Ridpath, who, he had actually been replaced by Mr. Meadows on an interim basis, to his term, which would expire in 2026, and then to confirm my term through 2028. Again, whatever ends up happening, mayoral election-wise, that can all be adjusted after that. Council, do we have a motion to move forward with adopting these two terms?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Now we get to do something we really like doing, providing property tax relief as best we can. So the state of Virginia, years ago, worked to address the personal property tax, typically called the car tax, and to require localities to provide tax relief to local citizens on a portion of the personal property. We get kind of a block grant amount, and to be able to reach that amount set by the state, we have to propose a rate for 2025, which would be 33% for personal property valued at $1,001 to $20,000. And business vehicles, motorhomes, and vehicles valued under $1,000 are excluded. Over $20,000 doesn't receive any additional relief as well, but that's by state mandate. So council members, do we have a motion to adopt the rate proposal for 2025 of 33% relief for personal property valued at $1,001 to $20,000? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We also are looking at the resolution of two of our opioid-related activities. Years ago, the city decided it was prudent to engage in litigation with outside legal counsel regarding the opioid epidemic. And that council has worked to negotiate settlements that have then been run through our city attorney, Mike Bedsall. And we do have a resolution for two things. I'll read one of them, then we'll vote on that, then we'll read the other. We do have a resolution of the city council of the City of Radford, Virginia, accepting the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan and approving the city's participation in the proposed direct settlement of opioid-related claims against the Sackler family and directing the city's outside counsel to execute the documents necessary to accept the plan and effectuate the city's participation in the settlement. Whereas, the opioid epidemic has caused thousands of human lives across the country and also impacts the city of Radford, Virginia, known as the city, by adversely impacting the delivery of emergency medical, law enforcement, criminal justice, mental health, and substance abuse services and other services by the city's various departments and agencies. And whereas, the city has been required and will continue to be required to allocate substantial taxpayer dollars, resources, staff energy, and time to address the damage the opioid epidemic has caused and continues to cause to the citizens of the city. And whereas, a settlement proposal has been negotiated that will cause the Sackler family, the owners of Purdue Pharma, family of companies, to pay an aggregate of $6.5 billion nationwide to resolve opioid-related claims against them and resolve Purdue Pharma's bankruptcy. And whereas, the city has filed suit against Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family for their role in the distribution, manufacture, and sale of the pharmaceutical opioid products that have fueled the opioid epidemic that has harmed the city. And whereas, the city's suit seeks recovery of the public funds previously expended and to be expended in the future to abate the consequences and harms of the opioid epidemic. And whereas, the city submitted a proof of claim in the bankruptcy and is thus entitled to vote on whether the bankruptcy court should accept or reject the associated bankruptcy plan. And whereas, the city has approved and adopted the Virginia Opioid Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding, the Virginia MOU, and affirms that this pending settlement with the Sackler family shall be considered a settlement that is subject to the Virginia MOU and shall be administered and allocated in the same manner as the opioid settlements entered into previously with the distributors, Janssen, Teva, Allergen, Walmart, CVS, Walgreens, and Kroger. And whereas, the city's outside legal counsel has reviewed the available information about the proposed settlement with the Sackler family and the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan and has recommended that the city accept the bankruptcy plan and participate in the settlement in order to recover its share of the funds the settlement would provide. Now, therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Radford that the city accepts the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan and approves of the city's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against the Sackler family and directs the city's outside legal counsel to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlement, including the required release of claims against the Sackler family and accept the bankruptcy plan. And be it further resolved by the council of the City of Radford that, in accordance with Section 2.13 of the city's charter, a second reading of this resolution is hereby dispensed with upon the affirmative vote of four members of city council. Okay, council, do you have any questions regarding this settlement? And Mike, do you have anything that you would like to add?
I think you covered it all.
Okay. Covered a lot. Any questions? Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second. Would you record a roll call vote for us, Melissa?
Yes.
Mrs. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Wolford?
Yes.
Mayor Horton?
Yes.
And thus, the second reading is, since we had four affirmative votes, is dispensed with as well. Moving on, we do have a resolution for opioid abatement against the manufacturers, so I will read that one as well. And this is a resolution of the city council of the City of Radford, Virginia, approving of the city's participation in the proposed settlements of opioid-related claims against Alvegen, Amneal, Apotex, HEMCA, Indivior, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus and their related corporate entities, and directing the city's legal counsel to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlements. Whereas, the opioid epidemic that has caused thousands of human lives across the country and impacts the city of Radford, Virginia, by adversely impacting the delivery of emergency medical, law enforcement, criminal justice, mental health, and substance abuse services and other services by the city's various departments and agencies. And whereas, the city has been required and will continue to be required to allocate substantial taxpayer dollars, resources, staff energy, and time to address the damage the opioid epidemic has caused and continues to cause to the citizens of the city. And whereas, eight settlement proposals have been negotiated that will cause eight opioids manufacturers, Alvegen Incorporated, Amneal Pharmaceuticals, Apotex Corporation, HICMA Pharmaceuticals USA Incorporated, Indivior Incorporated, Mylan Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, Sun Pharmaceuticals Industries Incorporated, and Zytus Pharmaceuticals USA Incorporated collectively known as the manufacturers, to pay approximately $720 million nationwide to resolve opioid-related claims against it. And whereas, the city has filed suit against certain of the manufacturers and their related corporate entities for their role in the distribution, manufacturing, and sale of the pharmaceutical opioid products that have fueled the opioid epidemic that has harmed the city. And whereas, the city's suit seeks recovery of the public funds previously expended and to be expended in the future to abate the consequences and harms of the opioid epidemic. And whereas, the city has adopted and approved the Virginia Opioid Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding, the Virginia MOU, and affirms that these pending settlements with the manufacturers shall be considered a settlement that is subject to the Virginia MOU and shall be administered and allocated in the same manner as the opioid settlements entered into previously with the distributors, Janssen, Teva, Allergen, Walmart, CVS, Walgreens, and Kroger. Whereas, the city's outside opioid legal litigation legal counsel has recommended that the city participate in the eight settlements in order to recover its share of the funds that the manufacturer settlements would provide. And whereas, the city attorney has reviewed the available information about the proposed settlements and concurs with the recommendation of outside counsel. Now, therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Radford that the city approves of the city's participation in the proposed settlements of opioid-related claims against the manufacturers and their related corporate entities, and directs the city's outside legal counsel to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlements, including the required release of claims against the manufacturers. And be it further resolved by the council of the City of Radford that, in accordance with Section 2.13 of the city's charter, a second reading of this resolution is hereby dispensed with upon the affirmative vote of four members of city council. Council, do you all have any questions? Mike, anything else to add?
I think you covered it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve this settlement?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Well, actually, Melissa, if you'll call the roll. Sorry.
Mrs. Archip?
Yes.
Mrs. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Wolford?
Yes.
Mayor Horton?
Yes. And having had four affirmative votes, we will dispense with the second reading. Council, on our next item of agenda, we have a DMV Licensed Agents Memorandum of Agreement. We need a little more information on this and a little more time, so I'm going to ask that we table that until our September meeting. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we table that. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We do have a little bit of business from a previous meeting. At our July 14th meeting, we approved six appropriation ordinances, 814.01 through 814.06. And actually, we were in error with the reference numbers for the appropriation ordinances. And as such, the fiscal 2026 budget is ordinance 815, and the AOs for this year need to reflect this. So ordinance 1819 amends the reference numbers that we previously had stated as 1814.01 through 1814.06 to reflect 1815.01 through 1815.06. Do we have a motion to move forward with ordinance 1819?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's just some housekeeping to get us in good shape, to make sure our ordinance numbers are where they need to be. Speaking of ordinances, we have three appropriation ordinances. What I'd like to do, if we could, is...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do you want to waive the second reading on this ordinance to correct the Scrivener's error?
Do we need to waive the second reading?
I would ask for that.
Okay, since we had four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you for catching that. We have three appropriation ordinances coming up, 1815.07, 1815.08, and 1815.09. The City of Radford received a grant from the Virginia State Police for their Help Eliminate Auto Theft or HEAT program. The grant supports enforcement, prevention, education efforts to deter motor vehicle theft. It's $10,000 that supports maintenance subscription for the city's four flock cameras, which have done an outstanding job in our law enforcement efforts. They read the license plates of stolen vehicles. The funds were not programmed in the development of the 2026 budget, therefore requiring appropriation. We don't have any matching funds. Council, do we have a motion to approve ordinance 1815.07?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Appropriation ordinance 1815.08 is for our summer camp that the Radford City Sheriff's Office put on, did a great job with once again this year. It was a fantastic day. They received a grant through the Attorney General's Office to fund the camp. It's $2,500 with no local match required. Council members, do we have a motion to approve 1815.08?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Appropriation ordinance 1815.09, which is funding for 911. Radford Police Department has been awarded the VDEM NG Next Generation 911 Additional Funding Grant for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $150,000. Chief referred to that a little bit earlier when he was presenting the recognitions for the police department. Funding for this grant will be utilized to replace aging equipment critical to operations, purchases of new equipment that will enhance interoperability and continuity of operations, and incentives for recruitment and retention of staff. Once again, no local match. Council, do we have a motion to accept 1815.09? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. All right. Mr. Meredith, are you still with us this evening?
Yes.
Would you like to share a few comments?
Absolutely. I'd like for everyone to know that it's been a great first month on the job. I've appreciated meeting everyone and meeting residents of the city. I just want to reiterate what a beautiful city we have in Radford. Few important things have been going on inside the city office, staff and myself. We've taken the first critical steps toward establishing a continuous improvement culture within our organization. I look forward to working with staff to further flesh that out in the coming weeks. And I know that finances, you know, weigh heavily on everyone's mind. I look forward to working with staff in the coming weeks to get some accurate forecasting and some more information to everyone so that we can make good, accurate decisions moving forward. But it's been a great first month. I've enjoyed working with everyone.
Thank you, Todd. We appreciate it. We're glad you're on board, and thank you so much for working to help us get better quality reports so we can know more about where we are, where we're going, and what we need to do. And we really are appreciative of that. Look forward to more of that in the future. And I have to say, Todd's hit the ground running. I know he's had a number of wonderful meetings across the city with different departments. Hadn't gotten to everybody yet, but it's just been a couple of weeks, but is certainly doing a great job, and we are so excited for you and this hire that is going to be transformative for the city. So thank you so much. Council members, what do you have? Seth, what do you have for us this evening?
Sure, I'll start off with what has already been said, and we all know it's been a hard few weeks for the city when we lost two just truly pillars in the community with Coach Linderberg and Mr. Green. I know how much they meant to so many people, myself included. To be able to see the response from the community and how loved they were, what an example they've set, that if I could be a tenth of that, you would have accomplished something. Just great men who did everything for the right reasons and really embodied what Raffey's all about. what Radford's all about. So they'll be missed, but their legacy will live on. And I'm glad that we were able to find a way to honor them. I know we've all, she's no longer here, but thank you again to Jenny and, you know, all of our staff. And it's hard to see someone leave, especially someone good, but we all are hopeful that, you know, that this is a good career for her and wish her and her family nothing but the best and thank her for her 15 years. They were well-spent serving us. Also want to reiterate, welcome to Todd. The more I've gotten to know Todd, the more I know that we've made the right decision. He's gonna, he's gonna get us to where we need to be, and he's hit the ground running. There's a rumor he'll be my neighbor, so I'm looking forward to that. But Todd, we're short, short month into this, but I've enjoyed getting to know you, and I know you're going to do a great job. I was able to attend the National Night Out last week. Wanted to thank our police department. That was a great event. You know, oddly enough, that day, my daughter didn't want to eat dinner, but she made room for a, for an ice cream cone. So it was, it was a good time. There was a lot of, lot of kids. I was, I was at the high school stop, and there were quite a few families that stopped by and came. And, you know, to get out and be able to put a face with you guys and the community and, you know, show my daughter not only who you are, but what police cars are. It's a good event, and you guys did a great job. So thank you for that. Also wanted to say, you know, with the schools starting at both Radford City Schools and RU, we wish everybody a very happy and healthy school year. Wish everybody the best. And, you know, be safe with the little ones coming on. So that's, that's right around the corner for us, starting-
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Yeah, it's hard to believe. And then, you know, Todd, Todd must have read my mind a little bit, because I did want to reiterate too, that, you know, we have taken some, some tough measures through the budget process with several cuts and increases in rates to try to stabilize and address the deficit the city is facing. We've initiated a hiring freeze as a measure to meet our budgeted $1 million personnel reduction, which is roughly 17 employees. We've been over 30 consistently. So to be able to see exactly where the city stands, track our progress, and make course corrections as needed, it's absolutely essential. We are able to produce monthly financial documents that include a current P and L, balance sheet, cash flow statement, and actuals versus budgeted report. Without those, the city is flying blind on an $80 million budget. Without those, I do not feel we are prepared to make the necessary decisions to move the city forward to a better place. A monthly financial report was one of the first things that I know that I, I and many others were hoping to be able to get going. And we've been struggling to produce that, but I feel like we're making headway, and I appreciate the efforts. So I'd like to ask that we have whatever conversations we need to have between the Finance Department and the Treasurer's Office to be able to produce those fundamental reports moving forward. I still do not feel we have a full understanding of not only where we are, but how we got here. So for us to be able to come together and get the right people in the right room to be able to make this, this happen, I think is imperative for us to move forward and be able to make the decisions that we need to get this community back to where it needs to be. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Jesse, what do you have?
Yes. Just a brief overview. I was on vacation, so I don't have as much to report out this month, but I did have a C MPT, a CPMT meeting, and I wanted to give you guys an update. One of the things that we ended up doing is instituting a drug test when we take children into our care. And one of the reasons we ended up doing that is we had a very young child that was in foster care that was exhibiting behaviors that we realized was actually detox. And we just had a little one, four months old, test positive. Don't quote me, because I could not come up with this many illicit drugs, but I believe there were either seven or nine illicit drugs that, that this child tested for, at four months old. So we're still having some challenges there. As you know, this is one of those boards that, as a community, we have to, of course, finance to help our children, but there is no way to set a budget. It is whatever the needs, the needs are of our children. And so I will say that it looks like this last year, we came in pretty close to budget. There were a couple of things. We, we had some savings on and some things that cost us a little bit more, so it was sort of a wash. We were hoping we might have gotten out of that year a little bit better, but we had, as you know, it's hard to predict the children that will come in and need services. So the Heritage Foundation did host the new teachers' reception, and we had a wonderful group of teachers here. I want to say 45 new teachers, and they had a lot of enthusiasm. The Heritage Foundation, once again, knocked it out of the ballpark in regards to all that they do in the community to bring folks together. I'm always very proud of their efforts. One of the committees that I'm on that I have, I have asked the chief to attend the next one with me is the New River Community Justice Board. And I'll be honest, it's one that I have kind of questioned my ability to really be an asset, because I'm the only council person. Everyone else on this, they happen to be in law enforcement for the most part or a part of detention. So a couple of times I've asked them, you know, because by the time we go through the meeting and I'm trying to figure out all their acronyms, the meeting's over, and I'm still trying to figure out exactly what they said. So I have asked the chief to come along with me and maybe see if he might be a better asset to them. They haven't complained about my attendance, but certainly I do believe it's important enough that we, we need a voice at the table and we need to be an asset to that group. So I'll be following up with you on, on how that proceeds. And again, just to welcome all the kids back to school, no matter what their ages are or what grade they're in, as well as the teachers, the administrators, the school board, basically our, our whole education community, welcome back to school. And one thing that I had on my notes too was to be more vigilant, extra vigilant in the morning, because as fall comes, we end up with fog. And just be careful, because we have more dips and ebbs and flows in the community. So just be conscientious that we've got youngins getting to school. And really, that's all I have this month.
Thank you very much. Kelly, what do you have?
Just to piggyback on the school year, starting, I heard from many different people today that meet and greets at school went well today. Thank you to everyone that donated to the McCarg PSA table. We were asking for new and gently used clothes to help fund the closet there. I have a big bunch of stuff that I need to take as well as school supplies. But if you're, if you're purging your closets throughout the year, coats, shoes, any type of clothing that the little ones could use, they, they definitely would need it for many reasons other than accidents. So thank you guys for that. I'm so excited about Community Fest. I know I said it once, but I'm very excited about it. And thank you guys for everything that you're doing there. I can't wait to find a place to volunteer. Melissa, I will scan that QR code as soon as I leave. Mr. Green, I've been the treasurer at McCarg for six years now, I think. And I didn't go to McCarg, but Mr. Green definitely knew my name every time I walked in, early morning or after school. He was always there to bring me a trash can or make sure I had everything that I needed. So I didn't know him as a school child, but I knew him as an adult, and he was just the sweetest, most dedicated person I think you could ever have in a school system. I was cheerleader for most of my high school career, so Coach Linnenberg didn't really have anything to do with me as much as he did the football players. But I did get a chance to see him about a month ago at Todd's Jewelry, and he looked right at me and said, "You're Artrip's wife, aren't you?" And I was like, "Yes, I am." He, he still remembered all of his players down to their names and what they did. And he told me about stats my husband had done. So he was definitely still reliving his, his glory days. We were so thankful to have him as another community leader. Todd, you really have hit the ground running. I spoke with you earlier today. I was on vacation and then traveling for work, so I haven't really got to have a sit-down with you. But I was, the 45 minutes that we talked, I was just impressed at all the things that you are looking into and researching. And so thank you very much. I know you're going to be busy as you go forward, but we really appreciate you. And I, like Seth said, I definitely think that we made a good choice. I want to thank Jenny. It feels different for sure, you not being here. You were one of the first people to welcome me onto council, and I could not have gotten through all of the new acronyms and things that are just abstract, that you just can't learn until you spend a few, a few months up here. So thank you guys for welcoming me and, you know, finding all the paperwork that I couldn't find and times and dates that I needed. So you definitely will be missed, and there are big shoes to fill there for sure. Melissa, thank you for filling some of those roles. I know that you have a very busy plate, but you've taken on definitely some of those roles and other people in back offices. I know that, like I said, Jenny had very big shoes to fill. So I know she had a lot of responsibilities to divvy out, but thank you to everyone that's filling those. Abigail, we wish you the best. It sounds like you are a veteran from long ago in your communications. And thank you to the grant writer extraordinaire. That's amazing that you have gotten almost a million dollars in savings and no match grants. So that's just phenomenal. We, we can't thank you enough for helping our city and our police department be able to fund the things that they need to keep our families safe. I have been, like I said, on vacation and traveling, so I haven't really got to do a lot of the community things. But I did take my six-year-old son, who loves cars, to the NRV Classic Cruisers event that they had at Biset Park, where he wanted me to take a picture of him in front of every single car that he passed. It was really well-attended. There were so many cars there, I can't even begin to imagine how many people came down there. The music was great, but one of the things that really resonated with me is they, at one point, when we were getting ready to leave, they asked everybody to stand and sing the National Anthem. And you could look around in the park and see everybody stop and turn to look at the flag and put their hand on their heart. And it just really touched me to be able to live in a community that is so dedicated and took that moment of silence to represent our community and our country. And it just was really a great moment that I don't think I will, I will ever forget. So that's all I've got. And visit the farmer's market. I love that place. It's got so many great things. And Christmas shop year-round, they've got great stuff. So that's all.
Thank you, Kelly. Guy, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, I also want to express my love and admiration for Mr. Green and Coach Linnenberg, two men of the highest character and integrity that I've ever known. And they'll be sorely missed. I want to encourage everyone to go to that website for the Community Fest and check all that out and see the maps and know where you want to go and where it's located and what have you. Bobcat Tailgate hasn't been brought up. That's our, our first game on the 29th. Is that four, starts at four?
Four to seven is the tailgate games at seven, I believe.
Yeah. So I want to encourage everybody to come out early and, and participate in, in that. And then to, I won't go through all the names again, but Jenny and Mike and Abigail and everybody who just worked so hard to, to help us continue to be the city that we've always been and try to get us back to, to where we want to be. I just thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. A couple of housekeeping notes. Counsel, we need to go on and schedule a retreat, and I'd like us to try to look at September 2nd or 3rd. That's the day after Labor Day and the Wednesday after Labor Day, if that could work. The second would be preferable in case we go a little long and decide we need a little extra time to try to get some priorities done and get some things worked out. But we could meet the evening of September 2nd if that works.
Good for me.
Works for me.
Okay. Let's plan for 6 o'clock on September 2nd. Don't know exactly how long we'll go, but that will be more of an informal retreat session. So with that, obviously, budget, 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 money, money, money is on everybody's mind. But bigger than that, for us to be able to chart a course of where we want to go, we have to have sort of our aspirations and thoughts, things that we feel like we need to do. So bring a list with you, and, and we'll talk through that. My hope is that working together with Todd and staff, that over the next six months before we start our budget process in depth for 2026, '27, we can begin to develop a five-year vision for council and the city that allows us to put a down payment on that in that first year with the, the choices we make, whether they are adjustments in funding or, or where we do things. But if you'll bring your, your things to that retreat, we do appreciate it, and we will go from there. Reminder, on September 8th, we do have a work session at 6 with the school board. And then that later that evening, during our regular meeting, we're going to recognize all of the winter and spring athletes and all the accomplishments at Radford High School. So we'll be doing that at that point in time and, and recognizing all the wonderful achievements of our Bobcats, outstanding things that have been going on this year. We do have the game on Norman Linnenberg, Coach Norman Linnenberg Day, August the 29th, and the Tailgate ahead of time, so we hope you can participate in that. And then back to school on Wednesday on Josh Green Day, Mr. Green Day. I will just share a couple of quick little stories. Both Mr. Green and Coach Linnenberg had, we had encounters over the years, but definitely in the last seven or eight years, there were so many things. I was fortunate to attend Mr. Green's retirement ceremony just a few years ago. And to see the love and the caring of the generations of people that knew him was so crucial. And he gave us, we all got a little pen that had a little measuring, a little ruler on the side of it. And I always liked to carry that pen, and I think about Mr. Green every time I look at it. Do I measure up to Mr. Green's example? It makes me think about him every single time, because he really did go above and beyond, not only with the students, but with the staff and the teachers and the families and, and people in the community. He cared so much and, and a caretaker, a custodian, someone who was the person who made sure everybody was okay. And he really was celebrated this weekend with his memorial service on Saturday. The First Baptist Church Rock Road did an amazing job, and we're just so thankful to everyone who celebrated the life of this wonderful man. So please help us spread the word for Josh Green Day, Mr. Green Day on this Wednesday, September 13th. Coach Linnenberg and I had a number of encounters from the time I was in high school on, and he was an amazing coach, but also just an amazing person. And he would always stop and talk with you about different things going on. And, and we spent a lot of time talking over the last seven years about what was happening in Radford. While Mrs. Linnenberg was in Commonwealth, I was over there a great deal, and I got to spend a lot of time, a lot of meals with them. And one of the things Coach said to me on a regular basis is, "Hey, you're doing a good job. I appreciate what you're doing for this community." There were some pretty dark times during the last seven years, and his words really hit home as it did for so many people that he worked with over the years and so many people who he influenced. He was a coach till his very last day, trying to encourage you to be your best, trying to help you recognize that you are moving in the right direction and that you're doing the good thing. So August 29th, let's celebrate Coach Norman Linnenberg throughout this city and just recognize him. It was a beautiful service a week ago down at the packed Dedman Center as hundreds and hundreds of players and family and friends gathered together from across the nation to celebrate just an outstanding Bobcat. And I will say, sing the Radford Fight Song a couple of times, because that was his favorite thing to do. In fact, his, his son said that on his way back, anytime he would come into the city, he'd say, "All right, let's strike up the Radford High School Fight Song." And they'd sing all the way from the city limits till they got home. That's pretty cool. So I'll always enjoy remembering him that way. I do want to thank Mike Wims, the Rosa Peters Parks folks, and the Radford Church of God and Christ. They sponsored a back-to-school event in downtown Radford today, just outside Cut and Ice Barber Shop, gave tons and tons of haircuts to kids, boys and girls, and provided back-to-school equipment, whether it was backpacks and lunchboxes, or pads and paper and pencils and all the things that they needed. And that's so appreciated for families to make sure that they have exactly what they need, and just people stepping up in this community left and right. I'd like to piggyback on some of the things that Mr. Meredith said and that Seth reiterated a little bit. One of the biggest challenges we've had serving on this council is having the tools to know exactly where we are, how we're doing, where we're going, and what we need to do. And I think we all made it clear during the interview process and with all of our meetings with Todd, we really need his help and the help of staff, the constitutional officers and everybody to make sure that we're all on the same page and that we're all marching together for the success of the citizens of the city of Radford. We've done a lot to get us where we need to be. And I'm thankful to Craig Meadows, who is still helping us in many ways, but thankful to him for helping us in the last eight months get to a much better place. And then thankful to Todd for all the work that he's already doing to get us in the right place. And I'll reiterate what was said, we sure made the right choice. And he is showing that he is the right person for this role, and we're excited. I do want to point out that Mary Draper Ingalls Day was another fabulous celebration in the city of Radford. That was the last weekend in July. We had people from all over. The art show was fantastic. The events at Glencoe Mansion were wonderful. And then we had an opportunity to welcome not only the new teachers, but also the entire Radford City Public Schools' teachers and staff back for their week of training before they start school on Wednesday, the 13th. We've got a great Bobcat Nation, and it's going to be a wonderful group this year. It should be a great school year. So many good things are happening. Radford University, first day of classes is August the 25th, so we're coming up just around the corner, and we will go from there. Last thing I'd like to say is thank you, Melissa, for all you're doing. Thank you for, to Tricia for the work on Community Fest. You know, one of the things we had hoped to do several years ago was to really get some more life in, in downtown Radford and to get some things happening, to have people who don't normally go downtown to visit, to turn some of the parking area into a gathering and performance space. That's exactly what's happening with Community Fest, and last year was a hit straight out of the box. And so we're looking forward to another good event, August the 23rd this year. So it's an exciting time in Radford. And with that, we will go on and adjourn until our next meeting, which will be September 2nd, 6:00 PM, right here for our council retreat. Until then, we'll say goodnight. Goodnight.